Thank you for coming to the council meeting of the Monday 23rd November and it's 4:30. Council acknowledge and pay respects to the Australian Aboriginal community as a traditional and original artist and continuing custodians of this land. All persons in attendance are advised that it's council policy to record council meetings, if accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a limited period of six months, and this meeting is being watched by YouTube. Item one on the agenda is apologies, and councillor Perry has come on leave of absence. Item two is declarations of interest. Do I have any declarations of interest in the AGM's open agenda? Item three is central matters on item 3.1. There's confirmation of minutes of council end of the 26th of October. Do I have a number of that recommendation please?
Do me.
It's Murphy, do I have a second one?
You do me.
Councillor Lacob, thank you councillor Murphy.
Be the procedure.
Thank you councillor Lacob.
Councillor Toew.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Murphy, you can ask.
Consider close.
Thank you, I've got motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion's carried and then this. Item 3.2.1 is public question time, and item 3.2.1 is responses to questions raised at prior meetings, and there is a recommendation there on page 6. We'll have a move of that recommendation.
I will.
Councillor Holst, do I have a second one please? Councillor Ennis, thank you councillor Holst.
Nothing further.
Councillor Ennis. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Holst, any comments?
Consider closed.
Public motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion's carried and then this. Item 3.2 is questions on notice from the public, and there's a recommendation on page 7. The agenda.
Have it moved then?
Councillor Lacob, do I have a second one?
Second.
Councillor Holst, do I have a second? Councillor Lacob?
It's all there, ma'am, nothing further to add.
Councillor Holst?
Nothing further, aye.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Murphy?
Yes, ma'am, just your page numbers, your page numbers. You just said the recommendation on page 7, correct?
Yeah, I guess top one, it's on the top, but it's in the beginning.
Yeah, just in relation to the responses to Mr Velocott on page 8, which we were playing the general manager earlier. In relation to, even though yes, we have dealt with this on a number of occasions, it states as has been previously explained, the specifics of individual lease and tenant arrangements are commercial confidence. I think they should just read, the specific, the specifics of individual lease and tenants arrangements are commercial confidence. And in relation to the statement around outgoing to utilities and other costs associated with exclusive leasehold premises within the facility are either directly charged to the tenants or recovered in full. I would like that statement withdrawn from the response if we can please. Would need a motion for that?
There is currently a motion on the books too, except it as as listed. Unless the number and second one have been to maximize the evidence, I'm going to take them. Councillor Lacob, does the number of issues?
Well, I don't actually count the issues, but I'm going with the recommendation. I don't really understand the reason to take that out, let me.
Councillor Holst?
I can do. Gordon Lacob. Councillor Lacob.
Thank you. In that case, you've made a point councillor Murphy, did you wish to?
I would then just encourage councillors to be aware that this response is from the councillors, not necessarily from the GM, which is one that we'll have to endorse. I think we need to consider very carefully as to whether we do in relation to its accuracy.
Thank you councillor Lacob, close?
Consider close.
Thank you, I've got motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against?
No.
I will ask for a show hands. Those in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor Holst, councillor Ennis. Councillor Lacob, councillor Milburn. Those against? Councillor Jarman, councillor Murphy and councillor Alexia. Motion is carried. Thank you. Item 3.2.4 is questions without notice from the public. This is the option for residents of the public to ask any questions, and they have 93 questions. And we didn't have any submitted prior to, so Mr Jenny?
Thank you, ma'am. My name's Douglas Jenny, 23 Watkins and Street, Devonport Roads. The council has a road legacy with the depression, depressions from the manholes and handholes. This has been due to the council's personnel not adequately supervising the works. The latest instance that I'm aware of is the two depressions at the roundabout at Fenton and Stewart Streets about which nothing was done. I did raise it with the general manager, but the question is, when is the council going to fix all these depressions?
Thank you, Mr Jenny. Any pardon? I'll take that on notice, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Rodney Russell, 235 Steel Street, Devonport. Next annual general meeting, could councillors be facing the gallery so that the gallery and for live streaming can see who they are and how they vote? The mayor's also, the mayor's table had water, the councillors did not, and bucket water could have been provided for those who may have required.
I'll take that as comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and it has been raised with me by a couple of councillors, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Question two, Holomund Street reconstruction. Can you tell me who made the decision to have a footpath placed with the power poles in the middle, Devonport City Council or the contractor?
Yes, three about a minute, you have a council in the side.
Thank you. Would Devonport City Council consider not selling the piece of land beside the old livery? Instead, keep it until the old livery has been demolished, then reinstate Fenton Way back to a straight through two-way traffic, which would give better access to the multilevel car park?
Thank you, Mr Russell. Nothing's been decided, so all of those things are still under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Mills?
Christopher Mills, 52 Caroline Street, I have two questions. Question one, A1 Tree Services are council's preferred contractors. A1 Tree Services promote themselves as, quote, "Our team of highly qualified arborists assess your trees and generate reports identifying issues, illness and symptoms", end of quote. So far, this administration has declined to clarify if there is a qualified arborist on the staff. There is a service agreement between A1 Tree Services and Devonport Council for assessing trees, thinning them, cutting them down and removing them. This service agreement is renewed yearly. Question, is A1 Tree Services with their team of, quote, "highly qualified arborists", end of quote? The reason why there is no qualified arborist on this administration's staff, that is the question.
And I'll take it on notice. Mr Mills, did you have a second question?
I have a second question, do please bear with me. I noticed the discussion about approving answers given to questions. So this concerns the identical answers given in the agenda to my two questions on notice of the 16th of November. If I may remind everybody of these answers, quote briefly, "Council has previously answered many questions in response to the removal of trees at 54 Caroline Street and cannot add anything further." That's in this agenda of page 9. It's clear from letters in my possession from two previous administrations that these trees were stabilizing a landslide hazard zone next to my home and should not be removed. Despite being fully aware of the evidence, this administration cut the trees down on the 5th of November 2019. As a foreseeable consequence of that action, my house is now at risk of structural damage. Of course, it is not the homes of the current general manager, the executive staff, the mayor or the councillors that have been put at risk by the actions of this administration. It is my home at risk. That's why I'm asking you to bear with me with all this. Question, would it not be more appropriate for this administration to answer my concerns about my property and answer my questions fully and transparently, beginning with providing full and transparent answers to my two questions on notice? That is question.
Thank you. Mr Mills, I don't believe your questions have been answered in the past. However, we will respond in writing. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr Velocott?
Thank you.
Bob Velocott, 11 Cocker Place, Devonport. My questions without notice, ma'am. At the annual general meeting, deputy mayor councillor Jarman declared an interest in regard to Mr Nevin's notice of motion requesting an independent inquiry of our Providore Place, then left the room and reframed from voting. Would the mayor explain why you and others in council who were responsible for the shemozzle pertaining to Providore Place did not follow the deputy mayor's good example?
Mr Velocott, if you'd like to rephrase that question with a little more respect on the happy answer.
In respecting to which regard?
Well, for for beginning shemozzle, I find that basic. I've heard from you before and I've had heard it quite often.
It's been used quite often, okay.
I've heard it quite often enough, thank you. If you would like to rephrase.
How would it put it? I can't even use the word mismanagement, could I? Because that's what it really was.
That's your opinion, Mr Velocott. If you want to ask me a question, then you ask me a question.
Well, that's it. Would you accept mismanagement? There was mismanagement at Providore Place?
No.
Pardon?
No. I've accepted a lot of words from you over the last few months, and I'm a little tired of it at once.
Yes and no.
I'm happy to continue to answer your questions as I have in the past, but I will expect you to give me the respect that I'm expected to give you.
Well, in regards to the problems pertaining to Providore Place?
Each councillor makes their own decision about conflicting interests. Thank you.
Each councillor.
Did you have another question?
Well, okay, well, thank you. The unconfirmed minutes of the 2020 annual general meeting included that council's ally Milburn raised on three occasions a point of order while Mr Garden was questioning the mayor. As to, pardon me, was questioning the mayor as to who in the gallery at the 2019 annual general meeting was getting a bit out of control. However, the general manager omitted to record other points of order raised by electors, and I wonder why. I refer to and note that Renton's Guide for Meeting and Organisations state on page 112 with item 7.7, "Points of order taken and the rulings on them should be included in the minutes", I stress, should be included. In other words, your points of order should be included in minutes. Would the general manager give good reason why he did not include in the minutes that Mr Malcolm Garden raised a point of order against Mr Greg Marshall because he was not speaking to the notice of motion but requested an apology from council for the mismanagement of Providore Place? And would the general manager also give good reason why he did not include in the minutes the fact that Mr Graham Nevin also raised a point of order against councillor Lee Murphy while he was speaking against Mr Nevin's notice of motion requesting council to support having an independent inquiry of our Providore Place?
Mr Velocott, the minutes of the annual general meeting which were held during this month will be endorsed at next year's annual general meeting, and amended if I need to beg at that point. Thank you.
So we can't get an answer to the name of why he left them out, no?
Did you have another question, Mr Velocott?
That, 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 thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other questions? Mr Clare?
Good evening, everyone. Jenny Clare, rate payer of Devonport. In starting my question, I wish to correct an mistake that I made at the recent AGM. During my question regarding the handling of the motions which were passed at the 2019 AGM, I misquoted the minutes of the December 2019 meeting. I said the four motions had already been considered, and I said that was a direct quote, and it was wrong. I should have said council having considered the motions. So I apologize that my quote was not quite right, as the general manager pointed out, but I would say that the two sentences actually mean the same thing. Both convey the idea that the motions have been considered, past tense. At that meeting, councillor Jarman stated that on her reading of the Local Government Act, a motion passed at the AGM must be considered at the next meeting of council. Indeed, at the 2019 AGM, the mayor stated that motions that are carried at the AGM are brought to the next council meeting, and that's a great quote. So from what was said by the mayor and councillor Jarman, we would be justified in thinking that these motions would be considered at the next meeting. Yet they weren't. At the relevant item namely 5.2, the resolution states, and this is quote, "That council note the minutes from council's 2019 AGM and having considered the four motions from the meeting and so on." That was said, that was all that was said regarding two of the motions. Does that qualify as bringing the carried motions to the next council meeting? Does that qualify as considering the motions? I don't believe so, and I don't believe any reasonable person would think that it does.
And your question?
Yes, it's coming here. The upside is I've only got one tonight. The relevant revolution, resolution in the December 2019 minutes contains only six lines. The mover councillor Holst and the second of councillor Ennis had nothing further to add. Councillor Jarman raised discussion about the format of the report, but no amendment was put, so it remained unchanged. So that was the extent of the consideration given to the motions which concerned rate payers had spent hours researching and writing. Mr Atkins stated at this year's AGM that that report is there for anyone to see. Yes, all six lines of it, with no mention of what two of the motions were. There is not much there for everyone to see. So yet at our recent AGM, Mr Atkins stated that he's comfortable that the correct process was followed. He further stated, "I'm confident that the report met the requirements of the Local Government Act and provided those motions for council's consideration." Seriously, two of the motions were not even mentioned. On that basis, it would be absolutely fine tonight if Mr Jenny's motion which passed at the recent AGM was not mentioned at all.
Miss Clare, I'm going to ask you to very quickly get to your point.
Yeah, I've just got two more sentences. It could have already been considered and eliminated from the report, and Mr Atkins would be comfortable with that. And further, to me, it's disappointing that only one of our councillors, councillor Jarman, took issue with the report at the last year's AGM, and none of the councillors felt the need to make an amendment to bring it into line with the act. So my question tonight is, to mayor, to you, to Mr Atkins, to all our councillors, if, for example, tonight, Mr Jenny's motion about the parlor for rate payers of 50 years wasn't even listed in the report, would you be comfortable with that? And if you wouldn't be comfortable with that, why was everyone comfortable that my motion and another motion last year were just eliminated from the report, not even mentioned what the motions were? So that's my question. Thank you.
I lost the question, but certainly everything that's on the agenda will be discussed tonight, and I'm not sure that what happened last year is directly relevant to what's happening this year, given that we, as councillors, have discussed the agenda from last year, and it was passed as a motion as the limits were tasked with most recent AGM.
Well, if I could just, would you like me to restate your question? No, you said you weren't sure what the question was, I was asking to take the answer.
Yeah, thanks, ma'am. Just to correct the record, this report was from us ago, but there were certainly some paragraphs around each of those motions in that report, so it's incorrect to say that the report didn't consider the motions that Miss Clare refers. So there was certainly commentary around those motions in that report.
Could you quote what that was, Miss Clare?
Miss Clare, I will send you.
Because I do.
We will send you the minutes of that.
I've got it at home and I've read it. It's six lines. It says there were four motions. It doesn't say anything about two of the motions.
Thank you, Miss Clare, you have your say.
I think through you, ma'am, I think Miss Clare, you're mixed up with the recommendation and the body of the report, so there was a, it would have been a report that went with the recommendation. In the body of the report, there would have been commentary about those motions, and the fact that councillors didn't discuss it in detail is not to say they hadn't considered it. Like a lot of items, they read the report and give consideration and make comment as necessary.
So what you're saying is that the extra information was in an attachment, is that what you mean?
It's in the body of the report, in the body of the agenda.
Where? Because 5.2 was the item with the resolution for those motions to be approved.
That's a decision.
And it wasn't there. It wasn't there. It was six lines long and it wasn't there. It wasn't mentioned.
Miss Clare, I'm not going to argue with you the same. We will forward you a link to.
Thank you.
To the agenda of that motion.
Well, let's hope Mr Jenny's motion does a bit better than that.
Thank you, Miss Clare, you have more than ever time. Moving on. Yes? To item 3.2.4, questions without us have done that. Item 3.3 is questions on notice from councillors, and there are none on the agenda. Item 3.4.1 is notices of motion, and we have a motion from councillor Lacob.
Thank you, ma'am. The motion reads.
Yep, that's the next one. And then it goes it.
Aye. The motion reads that council engaged with the federal government to explore opportunities to enhance and develop Home Hill as a place of historic and national political significance.
Thank you. Do I have a second one?
Second.
Councillor Holst. Councillor Lacob, if you'd like to speak to the motion, please.
I will, thank you, ma'am. Home Hill is one of only three prime minister's residences that is open to the public in Australia. The others being Chickley's Home in Bathurst, New South Wales, the Curtin family home in Godslow in Wismu, Australia. Chickley's Home is owned and operated as a house museum by the Bathursts' council, and the Curtin family home is owned and managed by the National Trust of Wismu, Australia. Interestingly though, the majority of prime minister collections in Australia are held in major institutions. For example, the National Library, National Archives, National Museum, the Museum of Australian Democracy, the Curtin University, the John Howard Library at Old Parliament House, the Whitlam Institute at University of Western Sydney, and that's just to name a few. These collections are well supported and cared for with the funding through these institutions which house them. In an article in The Australian in January 2019, Troy Bramston brought to light some federal government funding provided to prime ministerial libraries and their collections. In 2018, there was an allocation of 13.5 million to the University of New South Wales to support the establishment of the Howard Library in the Museum of Democracy at the Old Parliament House. This amount, it was reported, was consistent with funding provided to other prime minister institutions and libraries. 9.5 million had previously been granted to the University of Western Sydney for the William Whitlam Institute's relocation of the 19th century female orphaned school at Karamatta, and 3 million was provided to the National Archives to digitise prime ministerial personal papers. In 2019, the federal government announced that it spent 750,000 to purchase and renovate the childhood home at Bob Hawke in South Australia, with a view of it being open to the public, saying it was an important part of Australia's democratic history. A further 5 million was committed to create an annual scholarship known as the Bob Hawke John, a John Monash Scholar. And it's important to remember, as I put in the support notes, that Home Hill and the Lyons family have played a very significant role in the political history of Australia, and this should be recognised at the national level. For Home Hill to reach its full potential, government support is required, and council should lobby relevant politicians to raise the profile of Home Hill and see what support can be achieved. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holst?
Yes, I support the motion. Council and the National Trust have had plans for Home Hill for quite some time. The main thing is that we need to get funding for it, and it hasn't at this stage come forth, so I fully support the motion.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Jarman?
Thank you. May I ask a question through to the mover of the motion, if that's all right? Can you just clarify a little bit more what you actually mean? I mean, I would have assumed, obviously I'm wrong, that Home Hill has already got, because it's funded by the National Puritan Group, that it's got national significance. So if you're hoping for funding, is it to develop or is it to get national rating, I suppose is what I'm trying to find out.
Thank you, ma'am. Through to councillor Jarman. It's a bit of both councillor Jarman. We do need more support from the federal government, and I've just recently found that we've got our local member, Paul Braden, Gavin Pearce and Senator Richard Colby on board. They're going to champion the cause with the prime minister, but when you take in what I've just read out, they're doing it for the others, we need them to step up and do more for Home Hill.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, ma'am. I commend councillor Lacob for bringing this to the table, and wholeheartedly will be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Ennis?
Thank you. I agree with the motion. I think it's really important that this is recognised and received properly and effectively by the federal government, and so that Devonport can continue to promote Home Hill as a former PM's residence, and it's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Alexia?
Thanks, ma'am, ma'am. I'd just also like to commend councillor Lacob for the hard work that she's put in for this. I know she's. I know she's spent quite a fair bit of time on it. It's a great cause and I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Lakehart?
Thank you, ma'am. In stark contrast, the three house museums of Lyons, Chifley and Curtin are owned by local councils or the National Trust, all of which understand the significance of their properties and contents in the story of Australia's political history. But they have limitations on their ability to fund appropriate levels of conservation and care, such as the significance collections. Home Hill, its gardens and museum collection have the meaning of Tasmania and border Australian community for their aesthetic qualities and subsequent tourism value and particularly for their special association with the Lyons family, a political dynasty involving four family members who had and played a profound role in Tasmanian and Australian politics spanning over some 75 years. Its significance to political history cannot be overstated, but it would be impossible for this important heritage property to reach its full potential to educate and inspire visitors without significant financial assistance. And just as a final note on the bottom for people to remember, not only was Joseph Lyons being the only prime minister to come from Tasmania, but Dame Enid Lyons is Australia's most highly decorated woman with a Dame Grant Cross. She was awarded the Order of the British Empire and she's also a Dame of Australia. So at this point, my research is telling me that nobody else can top that. That is fantastic. So it's a double edged sword with Dame Enid being the first woman in the House of Representatives and the first woman in Cabinet. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item four is planning authority matters and we don't have anything to address this evening. I require this report, so I require a tender report for contact CT 0278 for Devonport Road. Do I remove it, please? So moved. Councillor Moore, do I have a second one?
Second one.
Councillor Alexia, Councillor Moore.
Thank you. Looks like all the due diligence has been done on this report. It's great to see that we do have a forecast saving of over 300,000, round 5,000. And there's nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alexia?
Thanks, madam ma'am. Nothing further to add then.
Any comments, questions? Councillor Moore, do I have a class? Consider it closed. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.2 is a tender report for contact CT 0280, Wright Street, Royal. Do I remove it, please?
So moved.
Thank you, second one, ma'am.
Councillor Lakehart, Councillor Alexia?
Yeah, thanks, madam ma'am. Look, it's a quick job that we're going to be doing for Wright Street. There's a few notes that we've put in the recommendation there as well. Happy to see this. Go ahead.
Thank you. Councillor Lakehart?
Nothing to add apart from it's good to see this is moving on very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Alex, sorry, Councillor Holster?
Just to our engineers, the difference between asphalt is 294,000 and pulled it is 300,000. There's not much difference money wise. What's the difference in the actions?
And the technical stuff?
Yeah, through you, madam ma'am. The strength of the pavement is equivalent for both those options. But the asphalt provides significant time saving because it can be, it's probably less than half the time to complete. And on a busy road like Wright Street, that's important.
Thank you, Mr Ennis. Councillor Alexia, do I have a class?
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.3 is a tender report for CF 029, supply and delivery of a wheel rider. Do I remove it, please, Councillor Lakehart?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and Councillor Holster, a second. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, ma'am. Obviously it's required, so interesting the price difference between number ones, the successive ones.
Thank you. Councillor Holster?
Nothing further to add to the report.
Are there any other comments or questions? Councillor Murphy, do I have a class? Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.4 is the deficit soccer development plan. Should we see a number report?
So.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy, and second to councillor Jarman. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, ma'am. Very, very detailed report. I think it's improved to say that soccer in this city and this region is an extremely high growth trajectory. I think this plan is taking into consideration a lot of environmental impacts, but I think we also need to consider the social aspects. The report is noted, so.
Thank you. Councillor Jarman?
Yes, forgive me, my iPad's playing on. Yes, I think this is a good development. What's going on up at Exeter Centre is certainly trying to be very interesting. We've got a lot of exciting things coming up, so for us to endorse this type of thing, it just makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Councillor Alexia?
Thank you, madam ma'am. Yes, look, this is a very exciting time at the Valley Road Soccer Club there. This plan is ideal as the Women's World Cup will be with us in a few years' time. So having this plan in place would be great for the club and the community and the state and Australia.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Murphy, do I have a class?
Thank you, ma'am. It is worth noting that these plans are integral to any sporting organisation or community organisation in being able to attract funding, whether it's state or federal government. So it's important that we support initiatives such as this and the quality of work that's gone into this is a real credit to the organisation. So hopefully we're able to proceed in the near future and I consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.5 is amendments to the 2020-21 Capital Awards Programme as written in the area. Do I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, do I have a second one?
You do, ma'am.
Councillor Lakehart, do you, Councillor Murphy?
We have discussed this, ma'am, at Lincoln workshops in relation to what is being proposed. I take no issue. It's a very detailed report. And the LRCI programme extension will enable council to actually provide even more into the community. So it is an initiative we have to take advantage of. Thankfully we met the criteria. Mr Skirby, Mr Wounds will have a fair bit to do.
Thank you. Councillor Lakehart?
I concur with councillor's comments.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Murphy, do I have a class?
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.6 is the request for replacement of commemorative plaque on the shared pathway of Hospital Road. So moved. Option one. Clumsy? Councillor Jarman, option one. Thank you. Do I have a second one?
Second one.
Councillor Holster, Councillor Jarman?
Thank you. I commend Jim Ritchie's daughter for putting this up. It's a lovely idea. Jim Ritchie, 1993 in Oklahoma, always remember what a great man he is and he was. And what he did for putting a plaque down in that section for the names of historic people and people of the area, the pioneers of the area, was very important and very, very important to him. So for Melinda to think of putting a plaque on a seat somewhere was a really lovely idea. Came across the seat that's already in a really great position. And I certainly approve the wording. I haven't got a problem with the wording. I'm sure that's what Melinda wants and it seems very apt. And I'm sure everybody would be in the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holster?
Yes, I can clear. Otherwise you remember Jim Ritchie with his historical sort of things. He was very good at that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
And second to add, as both the previous speakers have seen, because it is important that people putting their time into their community are recognised at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Jarman, do I have a class?
I think I would be very happy that this happens, so thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.7 is disposal of public land at 116 to 122 St Ross, while Devonport. There is a recommendation there on page 6. Do I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, do I have a second one?
You do, ma'am.
Councillor Lakehart, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Ma'am, the report's pretty conclusive. Obviously common sense should prevail. There were no representations in relation to this particular issue, so therefore I believe we should go to the next stage.
Thank you. Councillor Lakehart?
Councillor Murphy said what I was going to say, so I'll agree with that. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Councillor Murphy, do I have a class?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.8 is unconfirmed minutes on the annual general meeting of the National Member. There is a recommendation. Do I remove it, please?
So moved. The change is possibly closed. Go ahead. I'm happy to confirm the minutes with the recommendations 1, 2, 3. I don't agree with 4 being in this, so I'd like that to be a separate motion, if that's possible, so that we can have that for discussion.
So your motion is on the slides 2 and 3?
Yes, please.
Do I have a second one, please? Councillor Alexia, Councillor Jarman?
Look, it's all there. It's just that endorsing the AGM meeting guidelines for future AGMs is something I would like to have as a separate motion so that we can have an open and robust discussion about it, please.
Councillor Alexia?
Thanks, madam ma'am. I can clear with councillor Jarman there. I think this needs a bit more consideration. I had quite a fair bit of approach from rape powers regarding this and I think it needs a bit more further discussion than what's probably said at the moment. We have four items listed there. I think the top three are fine, but item 4, I'd like a bit more.
Your motion is with this clear.
Yeah, thank you.
Point of order, ma'am. Would that then require a procedural motion to then debate or put to table item 4?
Yeah, through you, ma'am. If someone could foreshadow that they would like to move item 4 as a separate motion.
That's reasonable. I said with that, so procedural motion.
I guess through you, ma'am, council have got two choices. You could just adopt points 1 to 3 and then consider point 4 at a later date or someone could foreshadow that tonight they may wish to move item 4 and debate that on its own.
Yeah, you could make the motion that we discuss at the next stop.
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
So do I need to mention that now?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. So you'd like item 4 to be discussed at a future meeting.
Yes, let's do that.
And then that's all. Is that, um, the second of the motion, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, thanks, madam ma'am. Yeah, I assume the.
I don't need to bother to say this, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's. You're comfortable with that? Councillor Jarman, is the move up to that?
Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
And Councillor Alexia, do I have a second one?
Question, question, madam ma'am.
Yes.
If we don't drop this down, does that mean we have to have this? It has to be another annual general meeting before this can be brought up again?
No.
I'm sorry, if it was brought up in an AGM, had to be discussed at the next council meeting.
This is just discussion about the meeting guidelines that we were done with the last year. It's not about what happened to that year. Thank you. Councillor Jarman, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, that's fine. Let's take it. We'll just get this covered.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Alexia?
Nothing further, thanks, madam.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Jarman, do I have a class?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against?
Aye.
I will ask for shout hands. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Councillor Ennis, Councillor Jarman, Councillor Murphy, Councillor Alexia, Councillor Melbourne. And those against, Councillor Holster and Councillor Lakehart. Oh, I'm sorry, I was wrong. Sorry, forgot I was here. Thank you. The motion is carried. Moving on to item 5.6 is the information. 6.1 is progress on the annual plan. There's a detailed report there. Do I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Councillor Holster? Do I have a second one?
Second.
Councillor Jarman? Yes, thank you. Councillor Holster?
It's all in the report. Nothing further to add.
Thank you. Councillor Jarman?
Yes, it's a very detailed report. I always enjoy reading it. That certainly gives us an idea of whoever are at and where we're going. And I certainly think that, again, just congratulations on dealing with COVID to all the staff and doing a great job and even though COVID looks a bit differently right now, we're still a little bit nervous on how it's going forward. So I think we're doing a really good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Ennis?
Can I just ask, on track and off track, what does that mean? What does the off track mean?
Thank you. I'll ask the manager.
Yeah, through you, ma'am. The off track means they're behind our target date that we're set to complete those actions within.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Holster, do I have a class?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.2 is elected members' expense report up to the 31st of October. Do I have a mover, please?
You do, ma'am.
Councillor Lakehart, thank you.
Second one.
And then Councillor Alexia, Councillor Lakehart?
There's nothing to add. It's all in the report.
Thank you. Councillor Alexia?
Nothing further to add, madam ma'am.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Lakehart, do I have a class?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.3 is workshops and briefing sessions. We all since our last council meeting. Do I have a mover? Do we look at that? So moved. Councillor Jarman, Councillor Ennis, Councillor Jarman? Ah, sorry. Thank you. Councillor Ennis, anything to add?
Yeah, these workshops and briefings have been quite interesting the last few. Really, the discussions that we had around those were quite good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Jarman, do I have a class?
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.4 is the National Party report. Do I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Councillor Holster, Councillor Alexia, Councillor Holster?
So with the report, the man is busy as normal.
Councillor Alexia?
Yeah, thanks, madam ma'am. It looks like you're being probably a little bit busy at the moment as COVID's restrictions start to lift.
That's true. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Holster, do I have a class?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye. Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.5 is the general managers' report for November. Do I have a mover, please?
So moved.
So move.
Councillor Holster, second one.
You have a second one.
Councillor Exio. Councillor Holster.
Nothing further to add. Quite a long report. Any action?
Councillor Exio.
Question through you, Mayor, to the general manager, if that's okay? Just noticed that you have met with Credit Card Authority and the neighbouring councils, and you've met with TES Rail. Is that moving along quite nicely? Or is it moving along?
Yes, through you, Mayor.
Off track.
It's not a question of anyone. Certainly with the executive of TES Rail and just talk through some of the issues related to the casual shared pathway. And that's not just in our district, but we've got it here. And there's a number of places where the rail and the casual pathway coming are close together, and we just know that's changed.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Exio?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. This question will go to the general manager just regarding point 1.10, meeting with representatives of bike possibility. I'm just wanting to know, I'm not sure if you can answer it or say anything, but how is the negotiations going with 108 times registered in port?
Yes, through you, Mayor. If I'm at that meeting, we're looking at getting representatives of those organisations to come in and meet with the council. Most likely in February workshop. How they're close to being able to announce their plans, where they've got to. So I'd like to come and brief the council.
Thank you. Thank you. So Exio, Councillor Exio.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, the general manager, you know, provided us with any advice whatsoever in relation to item 2.2 and 2.1 in your report, relation to meeting with representatives from costants in the update with issues that they are facing at this point in time.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. It's really just a catch-up, an opportunity for them to brief some of the challenges they've got with the upcoming very season. They talked about their reliance on city violence to a far greater extent this season because of the COVID situation. They won't be the backpackers that they normally rely on. So they're looking at working with the government to get increased intake through the city violence program. And also looking at trying to increase the amount of locals that are involved in the picking. Talking through that, and then also just really around some of the accommodation issues and challenges that they have at the role that council plays.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor, secondly, in relation to the numerous meetings you had around the Living City Night Show, level of feedback, sort of, from those particular members of government, if you may.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Yeah, it was just taking the opportunity over last month, me and I to make politicians both state and bedroom on both sides aware of the light show and the funding that council's seeking. And I say, we should feedbacks being good as an opportunity to show them the concept video. And we should, yeah, that's the point.
And thirdly, it's just in relation, I'm not too sure whether members of the public would be, I know there was some media around it through with the mayor in relation to the significance of the difficult city council and achieving. The location schedule's been approved from the Minister of Planning in relation to our planning scheme. So I think that's a relatively significant step forward for our municipal.
Thank you for that comment. And I agree. It's been a lot of work for us, and it's great that they've been able to tick all those boxes. And everyone knows where we sit now, so that's great. Any other comments?
Question, Madam?
I'll just check that there's anyone else, and then you can ask a question. Councillor Holster.
With the Brown House Park development, has there been any cooperation from TES Rail as far as the distance between the railway line and the two fences?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. We're pretty comfortable with the resolution on that now. It's just a licensed agreement that's been signed off. Comfortable with the fence remaining in its current position.
Couldn't squeeze it in at all.
Anything else to be closing?
Yeah, consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Ready against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.6 is the community services report for September on COVID. Do I have a mover? Councillor Jarman? Do I have a second one?
Second.
Councillor Exio, Councillor Jarman.
Covidians have to know that they've been a bit busy. What happened to COVID? Yeah, it's just gone out the door. I wonder what's going on. There's such a lot going on. Look, congratulations to you and your staff and everybody involved. We're just proving a point that it's amazing how we can still have things happening, whether they're not the same look or feel as last year. There's still things happening, and it's been amazing how the staff have really thought outside the square and just turned everything around and upside down to make things happen for the community. So huge kudos to everybody that's worked so hard. I think you must realise there's 30 hours in the day. So well done, and well done to all the staff, and congratulations on a big report.
Thank you. Councillor Exio.
Yeah. What COVID went. Just happened to note in the report, the YouTube video that was done by young Mr Sayers, I would encourage anyone who wants to get an understanding of what you can actually find in the city, is to watch that. And I would actually, probably shouldn't put it up today, so that's fine. That there, that video, it should be played on that big TV out there in the middle of that square. Because it is truly wonderful. Not only from a mental health aspect, but the fact that we've got such diversity right here on our doorstep is just incredible. And it really does give you a different perspective of a particular area of Devonport. And it's just absolutely wonderful. But yes, I agree with Councillor Jarman. Miss Hampton's been very, very busy.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Can I just ask a question about the commuter cafe? I noticed that there's been a couple so far. How are numbers looking for the next few?
Unfortunately, we did have to cancel one due to no bookings, but the next one had six booked in. The next one is due week after next, so we don't have any bookings yet. We're still continuing to promote it very heavily.
Thank you. John Seigler. Councillor Exio.
Thank you, Mayor. Just following on from Councillor Murphy's comment on Dr Sayers' video. Yes, it is certainly, I'm pleased you raised that, it is certainly worthwhile watching. And I'm memory speaking to Mrs Hampton before, it is going to go up on the big screen because it is certainly worth having a look at the amount of species of birds and other wildlife that Dr Sayers did find at the Domores River is truly amazing. I walked there on several occasions and didn't realise there was that much there. So he's got a lot of patients, and he's a credit to Devonport. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Exio?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Congratulations to Karen. She is doing a great job, and it is testing times. And improvising on suggestions that we should be going to the community to do the best that we can and to limit COVID comeback between us again. Great work, Karen.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Jarman, your first. Consider it closed. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.7? Is the general management technical and finance support services report for September and October. Do I have a mover, please?
So move.
Councillor Holster and Councillor Murphy, second one. Thank you. Councillor Holster.
It's all in the report. Fairly detailed. So I'll stay for everybody to read.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. It's very interesting in this particular report in relation to COVID times that we've been through. One of the things I noticed was the level of watches of our videos. I know as Mayor, the Mayor's message is, you know, it's right up there. It's probably, yeah, 934 in October and 1.2000 in September. You know, you're pulling a crowd there now, so.
I'll leave it at that. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Holster, close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Ready against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.8 is the conventional arts report for September, please. A mover, please. Councillor Jarman?
I'd be to second that, Mayor.
Councillor Jarman?
Yeah, again, exciting to see the gallery back open. Wonderful to see that we've opened for business, and that's just made everyone understand that things are happening again. Congratulations on the exhibits that have happened so far, and really looking forward to the ones that are coming up. We've got title coming up as well, which is exciting. And I'd like to see what comes from that. Every time we have it, it's different. And we're getting so many more people interested. It's such an international event now. So I really looking to see what happens with that. And I hope to see a lot more people going along to the gallery. It's a wonderful venue. It's so much bigger, and the opportunities we've got in that space are incredible. So do yourselves a favour. It's free. Go and see our exhibits, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Exio.
Just endorse Councillor Jarman's comments, and I too am thrilled it's going so well. It's good we've got the Best Strike Maritime Centre open at the weekend, and a new reception desk and a small shop there, small retail, doing well. And like Mrs Hampton, Mr Dodson is working very hard because it's all there in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Exio?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Congratulations to Jeff on the job all done there. Realise that all the hard work that he's put in during the COVID period, when his staff levels were pretty low at the time. They're all working very hard and very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holster, your last.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Jarman, your first. Consider it closed. Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Ready against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.9 is minutes from council special interest groups and advisory boards. Do I have a mover, please?
So move.
Councillor Exio. Councillor Jarman?
Mealy procedure.
Councillor Jarman? Did you just say?
Mealy procedure.
Oh. I do have a question if I may. Ask Mrs Hampton, if you don't mind. You were guest speaker at the existing heritage walk in East Devonport. Do you want to just elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yep. So that was a project that Roadrunner, Southeast Roadrunner Club brought to our attention, that they wanted to work with council to upgrade the signage on that track, make it more, I guess, educational, but also with physical fitness in mind. So we've been working with them to prepare a project, a grant application, and that has been submitted. No details have really been finalised in regard to what the signage will look like, only concepts. And it will come back to the Heritage Committee for their final approval.
Thank you. Anything the special interest group at East Devonport can do to help, we might bring that up as a subject.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Exio?
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Ready against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 7 is section 23 committee, and the 7.5 is calendar 30, 15 minutes of the 16th of November. Do I have a mover, please?
So move.
Councillor Murphy, do I have a second one?
Second one.
Councillor Exio, Councillor Murphy.
Again, mealy procedure.
Councillor Exio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing further to add.
Any comments, questions? Councillor Murphy, close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Ready against? Motion's carried unanimously. That brings us to the close of the open items on the agenda. The time being is 5. Brilliant. And I'm going to motion to move into closed session.
So move.
Say good.
Councillor Exio. Councillor Murphy, Councillor Exio, anything to add?
It's procedural. Nothing else to add.
Councillor Murphy.
Nothing further.
Thank you. I'll put motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Ready against? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.